All right, well then I will call to order the city council's study session for Monday, February 7. I don't believe that we need a roll call, so we jump right into, do we need, we don't need a roll call?
Standing session.
So, I don't think so. So we can jump right into the American Cell Tower discussion.
You were calling and discussing this for... We have.
Thank you.
Lauren Franklin is supposed to be joining us from, Lauren Franklin is supposed to be joining us. She's been part of our alliance for the task to do with the American Cell Tower. Unfortunately, I'm not seeing her on the guest list currently. However, I do see that Ms. Joyce Parker, who is here to discuss the MML, representative of MML, she's on to get down to be in the revisits, the Cell Tower discussion before it's Friday night time.
That sounds fine. We can start there.
You're also here to hear some butts along.
Yes. I apologize everyone, I had not eaten today. Something wasn't working. You want to, how about we just go to the MML and do that one first, okay?
She's having a little trouble getting on President American Tower.
Okay. So who's introducing the, in the MML portion?
I can do that. Mayor, Council, we've, your, your selected body have voted to proceed with the MML for the executive search. We have signed the agreement with MML and our representative that we've been assigned is Joyce Parker. My understanding, Ms. Parker worked with the City of Labor Village back in 2018 and she is on the line. She's here to give a quick overview and answer any questions you may have. I know one of the main things that Ms. Parker would like to do is set a schedule for the profiling of what, what you're looking for in this next, next executive search.
Okay. Welcome Ms. Parker, again.
Oh, good afternoon, a good evening to everyone, to the mayor and members of the city council. Your police chief had requested that I be a part of the meeting tonight to kind of talk about the process, given that there may be new people involved in the process. And so, you know, what I'd like to do was maybe touch base with you on the various steps that is part of the recruitment process and try to answer any questions that you might have. Can everyone hear me?
Yep, very fine, thank you.
Okay.
Have any questions for Ms. Parker?
Okay, so in terms of the recruitment process, generally, there's three meetings that take place with the mayor and the council and the staff and the community. The first meeting is to work together to develop profiles and there's three profiles that we need in order to get the search process underway. One is related to the candidate in terms of what your requirements will be for those that apply for the position. So we make that determination early in the process. And then the second profile is related to a community profile that describes the community as part of our brochure that we'll develop. In addition to the, the community, we also talk about any issues or challenges related to the city and we talk about the attributes related to the city as well. And then the other part, as part of the community profile, is really identifying the attributes that you'd like to see with your candidate for the position. And then the third profile is just related overall to the organization in order to share information with candidates for the position about the city organization, the structure, the number of staff, the budget, information that will help candidates determine if they are interested in moving forward to the next step related to applying for the position. And then the other area that we'll cover during that first meeting is establishing a schedule for the search and what I'll do is provide prior to the meeting, a draft proposal related to the tentative schedule. And so those are the areas that we'll cover during that first meeting and then hopefully, if not tonight, very soon after the meeting tonight, if I could get a date that the city council will be available for this profiling session, I can get that on my calendar as well. The second meeting in the process, once we do the profiling, we actually go to that step where we advertise the position on behalf of the city and the position is advertised in, in various media as far as with MML. They, MML actually have a classified section where the information will be advertised. We normally advertise with the International City County Management Association and other organizations that are affiliated with management positions. And then if there are certain areas or organizations where you think we should also advertise, we can include that as part of that process and as part of our second meeting for discussion. In the second meeting, we actually, once the position is advertised, what I will do is put together two reports for the city council. One is related to all of the candidates and how they meet your requirements for the position. The information related to each candidate is stated in the report by number due to confidentiality. And what I do as part of that report is compare each candidate with your requirements for the position so that you can have a better understanding of how each candidate really meet those requirements. In addition to the candidate summary, which I just referenced, I also put together a report on potential semifinalists for the position and I provide additional detail related to each one of those individuals or candidates. Generally, I will interview all candidates that meet all of your requirements prior to putting together this report. And then based on the interview and the other information that I gather prior to this meeting, I make recommendations on those that should be considered, but certainly, the final decision is the city council. But I try to provide that information as a starting point as part of that process. Now, during the second meeting, we also would request that as part of the review, the city council determine potentially which candidates they would like to interview and we'll discuss a date for interviews, the type of interview process, the type of questions that can be developed as part of the interview process. And if there is a meet and greet, we also discuss the meet and greet that is being considered so that we can coordinate with the city to get everything underway. And so all of those things hopefully will be discussed during that second meeting. And at that point, I can go back to the candidates to let them know what the status is. If they're invited in for an interview, generally what occurs, I make contact with them, once they accept the interview and we have an opportunity to conduct a reference check and some other checks related to their background and their experience, the information is then forwarded on to the city. And at that point, the candidate no longer has confidentiality. And so that's part of that second process, a second phase in the process. And then thirdly, I guess, once we schedule the date and the candidates are notified of, of their invitation to participate and the actual date of the interviews take place, we will interview each one of the candidates. I will be there with the city council to facilitate the process throughout the entire day. And once you interview the candidates, based on what occurs, sometimes city councils look at second interviews. Other times, if there's a candidate that really stand out, the city council might feel comfortable making a conditional offer based on a background check as well as contract negotiations. And so that part would be determined after you interview the candidates and decide what direction you like, you would like to take. And so with that, once you actually identify your finalists for the position, as part of the agreement that you have with MML, we will facilitate a background check related to the finalists for the position. If there is a need for any additional follow-up, certainly that's something that MML will also be involved with as well. And so that's primarily the, the process that we would follow and I'm certainly open to any questions that you might have at this time.
Yeah. I'm wondering, when do you get resident input into the profile development?
Well, when we, when I come back for the, the second meeting, once we identify the number of candidates that we have and the process that you would like to follow, we would actually have a discussion about community involvement. And that process primarily is determined by the city. So for example, if you decide you want to do a meet and greet, basically that's a reception where you might invite the community in. Either they can be in as part of observing the candidates prior to interviews or they can be a part of the process during the interview, not necessarily participating, but observing the interviews themselves. And so that's something that really is determined by the city and, you know, certainly we can work with you as far as getting invitations out, if you'd like to invite members of the community or your stakeholders in for reception. And so that would take place probably before the interviews take place, but as part of our discussion during that second meeting.
Okay, so there isn't, isn't an opportunity for residents to have input into what the candidate looks like, what, what we're looking for? I thought that was part of the process, but.
That, that is. It is my understanding in the, the agreement that you have, there is a component in the agreement for a meet and greet, which is the reception. Now, the structure of the reception.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
The structure of the reception really depends on how you would like to see it structured and that's part of our discussion that would take place during that second meeting. And that would be prior to any interviews being scheduled.
Okay. And then you talked about that you would interview the candidates. What does your candidate interview process look like?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear the question.
What does your candidate interview process look like? When you're, you said you would interview all the candidates that meet the requirements?
Yes.
What does your process look like?
So what I do is actually evaluate each one of the resumes based on the requirements established by the city for the position. So for example, if you require a master's degree, if you require experience in certain areas like economic development, I evaluate and screen each one of the candidates prior to putting together my report. As part of the interview with each candidate, I cover details related to their background and experience and how it relates to the position for the city of Lathric Village. I also ask a series of questions that will provide some insight on various attributes that a community might want to see with their next manager. I try to get some insight, for example, related to any primary issues that you might raise as one of your concerns as part of the profiling process. And I ask specific questions related to their strengths, their skills, abilities, whether, what kind of communities they currently work in versus other communities they've worked in. But I try to get a fairly good understanding of their background, their experience, skills and abilities, and how it relates to your position.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions?
How's the candidate pool, given the current COVID situation and so forth? Is it a good pool relative to normal or is there a lot of candidates that you've been seeing with some of the drug researchers or how's it looking?
Well, with the searches that I've had within the last six months, I would say that right now, the candidate pool seems to be pretty stable and consistent. I think a big key related to the, the candidate pool is the community itself, the stability of the community, how the candidate might fit. They look at all of those things in terms of their interest in a position, but I think overall, there's been quite a bit of interest in various positions through MML.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, Ms. Parker, and we will make sure that we get a doodle poll out or some type of poll to figure out when we will have a meeting with you, when we can all meet.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Okay.
Mayor, let's just get down to item D. I know that Scott Health is, helped us here with it and I know you have a limited amount of time.
That's fine. So we're going to be skipping down to discussion item D, which is the butts along update. And we have Beth, and I don't want to ruin your last name. How do you say your last name?
It's Scott Health. Not as complicated as it looks.
How about Ms. Beth? Go ahead.
It works perfect.
I invited Beth to, to join us this evening based off of our conversation we had last week with respect to the revised invoice that butts along has proposed to, has proposed a revision in the invoice that was made previously to the city. I know that there were some questions, specific questions about the billing invoices and the city, we didn't actually receive an updated invoice that reflected which charges were reduced or how, how the reduced amount was calculated, but I did invite Beth so that she could answer some of the specific questions that the council raised about the invoice. So I'll turn it over to council, if they have questions for her, we'll further discussion.
Okay. Anyone having questions?
Who do?
Sure.
Was, did anybody write up an agreement between butts along and us, the city? Did you have some kind of a?
There was, there was a fee agreement, there was a, a retainer agreement that was, that was signed by the city. That's correct, right, Beth?
It's an engagement letter that was to bill by hour. We were hourly rate.
I'm sorry, did we limit your time or did we put a timer, financial constraint?
I couldn't understand the questioner. I didn't, I didn't, I couldn't hear what you said, say anything.
Oh, I'm sorry. Was there a time constraint or a financial constraint written into the agreement?
Um. Yes, councilwoman, there was no financial limit or cap on it. There was a, nor were we limited in our amount of hours. There was, the time constraint was that city council had a very, very short deadline and they wanted us to drop everything we were doing and to get on this right away and get answers and, you know, full press because this was something of great importance to you and it was going to affect your upcoming election and you owed some information to Oakland County.
Any further questions?
I guess the, the hard part about this whole thing is, at least for me, and having sat on the other, other council, I know we had put a, given a retainer for $5,000 and, you know, I, I understand there was a compressed timeframe, but we had no notification whatsoever in terms of the fact that we were getting close to that retainer. I mean, I kind of equated to, you know, taking your card for service, you get an estimate and, you know, if they're going to go over that estimate, they let, they let you know and it just seemed like it was, it was quite a shock to receive the initial bill, you know, when, you know, I think the members of the old council were thinking that we were at about $5,000 because we hadn't heard anything subsequent to that, that we're getting close to the number of hours, we're getting close to the number, you know, to the dollars that, that we had in the retainer. So I think the assumption was that we would have heard something and we didn't and I think that was really frustrating and frankly, I mean, it was, was pretty shocking when we saw that, that, that bill. I mean, it was five times, more than five times more than what, what the previous council had expected.
I can't address what the council expected because we didn't have communication with them on that. They said, we were just told this is a rush and because the other thing is, we were given very little direction because as I understand it, city council wanted to ensure that butts along had no preconceived notions of any results. And so therefore, we were just told, you know, look at these affidavits, look at these petitions and tell us what, you know, is there any issues, is there problems, does it comply with state law, does it comply with local law? Tell us what you see. So it was kind of fairly, I don't want to say wide open, but it, it didn't give us a lot of directions. Had we had the insight of some of the concerns that were discussed by the council members during their meetings and say, this is the real concerns we had, we had this concern, that concern and the others, it would have helped us focus more on those and could have limited, you know, the, the legal time spent, definitely. But, and, and the fact that you were rushed, you know, that you did have such little time. We did have an associate at a lower level do the vast majority of the work in order to keep the costs down. Virtually all my work was not charged. We had, you know, Justice Wilder, Supreme Court judge, to allow this work and, and, you know, a lot of his time wasn't written down either, but at the end of the day, we understand what your concerns are. Your attorney has, has made them clear. He's a very, you know, effective, efficient attorney and he has said that you've raised concerns. And so it's a large bill, you know, 28, 3, 39. And we have agreed to cut it down to 20,000 in light of a lot of different things. So that's a 30% discount. That is something, you know, in our books enormous. I had to go to our finance committee, in fact, I'm still have to get my final approval from them, but I told them I was meeting with you. But I've had to go through a lot of hoops to get it down to that amount of time. And also, I just want to point out one other thing which made it a little bit more difficult for me is that this bill was sent last year and it took, you know, several months before the issue was raised with us, which something that just, as I said, made it difficult for me with my finance committee. The bill was dated October 31st. And it was, and you raised it just before Christmas.
Does anyone else have any other questions? Well, thank you for coming. Yes, that's it.
Yeah, there's, there's nothing additional from council. I mean, this, again, this, just so Beth is aware, this was put on the agenda for approval and it failed for lack of a second. So not that you want to tell us what you're going to do, Beth, you have to sue the city, but if this doesn't get approved and this invoice isn't paid, what, what's the next step, just so that council hears it directly from you and not me?
What's his next step for me if you don't pay the legal bill?
Correct.
Oh my goodness. I hope we don't have to go there.
Right.
I, you know, so that we wouldn't have to go there, that is why we made what is considered a huge concession to you, which is cutting down the bill by 30%. And again, you know, there was a lot of my time I didn't even bill and, and Justice Wilder's time wasn't billed because we really were trying to get your answers. And then after, you know, you got the final opinion letter, we still had follow-up questions that you had and we tried to respond to those. You know, I remember one was the affidavit for Councilwoman Kenez. You know, that was, that's the only one I can remember off the top of my head that went back and forth several times because you had a concern about the date of that and when it was notarized, et cetera. So there were, as I said, we really tried to address your concerns and give you timely, responsive, you know, information and advice.
Well, thank you for coming.
Yeah, and hopefully I have enough information to get this bill approved and get it paid.
Thank you, Ms. Beth. We're going to jump back to the American Cell Tower discussion with Lauren Franklin.
Lori.
Yeah, that's, thank you, I'm sorry for mispronouncing it.
That's okay, everybody does.
Introduction or who's it going to give the introduction for?
So you have Ms. Lorene Franklin on from, she's with Tower Alliance, she's their senior lease consultant and so she is representing American Cell Tower. And so as you have requested, they have someone from American Cell Tower come and speak to you about the lease agreement and what has been proposed. And so we have Lorene here to answer those questions.
Thank you.
Does everyone have the document, just a letter that I had sent out to the city, probably October of last year?
It, yeah. Yes, it's been in previous packet.
How, would you like me to just, you know, go through what our request was and why we were making it or what is going to be easiest for the council? Or what is going to be easiest for the council?
Yeah, if you could, if you could go through what your request was and, and sort of your intentions behind that, that would be really helpful.
Okay, not a problem. Over the course of the last several years, there have been a number of consolidations and mergers that have taken place within the cell tower industry. And that has left us basically with three major tenants that we are able to market to. It also with the merger of T-Mobile and Sprint last year, all of the contracts were renegotiated between the cell carriers and the tower companies. Not only American Tower, but the other major tower company in the country, which is Crown Castle. So what that caused is all of the tower companies to look at all of the individual sites. And what they were trying to do is eliminate risk and increase the value for not only the landowners' long-term revenue, but also for the tower company and their, you know, profitability. We now have to look at each individual site as its own individual profit center. And in order to do that, we looked at all of the sites individually. And with this particular location, I sent out a request that we were looking to request a rent reduction. Not a huge rent reduction, but a, you know, small rent reduction so that we could keep the site within the profitable margin instead of letting it go into a, a negative margin. And we asked if you were willing to look at the escalator that is in your current contract. Because right now the escalator in your current contract is based on a CPI with a 5% maximum annual, although it is paid, paid on a term basis. So essentially the escalation on the base rent on this site could be 25% every five years. Our contracts with the cell carriers limit us to 10% every five years. And so we don't want any site to get into the situation where the rent being paid is outpacing the rent that we are receiving. So that is basically it. We are looking to maintain the site as part of our long-term portfolio. We would like to, you know, keep it as part of our long-term portfolio. But we do have to address the financials. That was one of the ways that I proposed in that letter to address the financials is to get the rent slightly lower, get the escalation in line with our current master leases that we have with carriers. You also have a revenue share component to this lease. That revenue share component would not be affected. The other option that many landowners are taking a look at, because it's a good capital infusion. We do have a lease buyout program where we will take an easement agreement on the leased area and give you a lump sum payment in exchange or in lieu of future rents. And I ran the numbers again because they are variable. And currently you're looking at roughly, I think it was 875,000 as a lease buyout if that was more of a, you know, beneficial financial agreement for the city. Questions?
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Do you know the specifics of the revenue share portion of our currently?
Yes. Yeah, hang on one second. I gotta pull up another document here. Yes, I apologize for not being on at the start of the meeting. I was having some incredible technical difficulties and not getting any sound through my computer. The revenue share component comes from T-Mobile. And T-Mobile is paying roughly $20,000 a year in revenue share.
The 20,000 is 20,000 that we're getting as our revenue share or?
Yeah, that's, that's the portion that you are getting. You are getting 20,000, approximately a little bit more than 20,000 in revenue share. And your rent is about $20,600 annually. However, you are paid monthly. Those are annual figures. So the total revenue on the site is about 41,000 annually.
I was just, you know, you would purchase the property or you would just, how, how does that work?
Yeah, no, it's not a purchase of the property. It is, we take a, an easement on only the leased area. In, very similar to what an electric, you know, utility would have is an easement. The title does not change hands. So all we are doing or would do is take an easement on that property that is currently under the lease and described in the lease.
And would you be able to do something else with it down the road? How long is the lease for? 16 years? Does that work?
No, if, if we did a lease, what we call a lease buyout via an easement agreement, it is only for communications purposes. Typically, the, if we do it as a term easement for the full value, it is a 60-year term easement. And even if towers are no longer needed during that term and we take the tower down, we can't do anything else with the easement. The easement, we just revert back to the city.
Okay. Any other questions? I'm hearing none. Thank you, Lorene, for coming. We appreciate it.
Oh, thank you. And if anyone has any follow-up questions, you have my email. Feel free to reach out to me and I'll give you as much detail as I possibly can. Thank you all for your time today.
Thank you. Um, so now we're at C to discuss the generator quote update.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is an ongoing project. I met with Detroit Electric today and recontracting as well, as well as Consumers Energy. I have an appointment with Echo Electric tomorrow. We're getting close. The, the quotes still are not in yet. The issue we're having moving forward is going to be how long it's going to take us to get a generator. Quote I got today or an estimate of what I got today was 46 weeks. So we're looking at almost a year before we actually have a generator for the city. So it's ongoing. It's, uh, as soon as I have the quotes, we'll get them to council.
Okay. Does anyone have any question? Questions, I should say? Okay, well, we will, thank you for the information. We'll jump down to E, proposed charter amendment cannabis.
So, I think it was two meetings ago, I, I provided council with a, a draft charter amendment that would opt out, opt the city out definitely from the, from the cannabis industry. That, that was one, um, one method of doing it. The, and again, this, more of a discussion on this because, I've seen, I was thinking about it and one of the things that had come up in another community was the, that community's inability to submit ordinances to the, the voters and the residents to, to determine. Now, our charter does provide us that opportunity to submit an ordinance to the voters and, and make a decision on that ordinance. The scenario that I envisioned or potentially envisioned that it was kind of brought to light further this past week with, uh, the Dolphin Green, the Dolphin Green. That organization, so they, they received no approval from the city of Lake Village. They haven't submitted anything to the city of Lake Village. But they've already filed and received a pre-qualification from the state of Michigan. So just thinking about this hypothetically, let's say that there's a, um, a question that's presented to the voters, should this ordinance be repealed? If it's repealed, at that time, the city hasn't opted in or opted out. Does, does that, or potentially, I think it does, does that allow individuals or entities with conditional approval from the state to then convert that into a full approval? Because at that point, by default, the city would be opted in. And since there are no standards or procedures set forth under local ordinance, those entities would, would be free as long as they've got state approval to operate their business at their proposed location. So that would mean that election results come out and become certified. Though we following, they could open up shop on, on Wednesday if they wanted to. So that's, that's obviously the scenario that we're trying to avoid. Where we then, now we have legally non-conforming organizations that are operating within the city and, and haven't gone through the city's application process, haven't gone through that vetting process. They haven't, um, paid for any of the application fees or the, back the, the costs that the city are going to encourage you to process and evaluate these applications. And then once they're there and established, it's very difficult for the city to remove that type of an entity. So this, this idea of amending the charter and opting out, in essence, would, would effectively remove the ordinance that's currently on, on the books because it's, can, can, would conflict with the charter. And then it would also eliminate any opportunity for any entity to begin conducting business within the city during that period of time. Because it would be difficult to, not impossible, but it would be difficult because an ordinance would require two readings and a publication on an effective date. So if the city were to have it all prepped to, to be introduced to the first reading in October and a second reading, um, you know, after the, after the election, before the results came official, there still is that publication and effective date window that might not line up perfectly. And so you would have, uh, and again, this is, this is assuming that the residents voted to repeal the ordinance. So, you know, another scenario where if there's been a first reading and let's say the residents don't repeal the ordinance and it remains in effect, now you've, in essence, introduced and started an ordinance to opt out when your residents have just told you they want to be opted, remain opted in. So, so this, this charter thing is amended, is starting to look, sound better in my head than, more so than when I first introduced it. But I know that Councilwoman Kenez brought this up and wanted to say it tonight. So I'll turn it over and try to answer any questions that you may have or we can continue the discussion about how the city wants to approach this.
So if we amend the charter, we, there's no need to do anything with the order. The charter will.
Because you're correct, the charter amendment would rescind any ordinances in conflict with, and, and we could, you know, formally rescind that ordinance and clean it up so that it's not, no longer there. But, but the, if that were approved by the voters, that, that would effectively supersede and trump the ordinance that was previously enacted, so.
In the, in the ballot language, if we did a charter, could we put an effective date for the ordinance for the, uh, you know, for it to take effect? So that way then we would then have time and wouldn't fall into that potential situation we could, you know?
That, that is one option. And, and the state had, has done that previously with other ballot initiatives where they put an effective date. So, so that is an option. But again, I don't know. I, I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't like leaving that window open because that stuff is always subject to interpretation. And unfortunately, the law, instead of being black and white, is often very gray. So I, I, I would like to have a scenario that is airtight as possible to avoid that overlap. But that, that is another possibility that I did consider is having the January 1st effective date or something that would allow the city time to, to amend the ordinances appropriate.
So if we amend an ordinance, we don't, this is it. We just put this on the ballot. We don't have to go through and taking off the old and putting on a new ordinance.
Correct. And, and again, it's, it, you're right, absolutely. It would trump any ordinance because it's a charter amendment. Again, it's, it's just one option. I mean, there, there are other ways that we could do it. And we had talked about putting the, the ordinance that has been approved on the ballot, doing a delayed, effective date. We're also putting a ballot question that not only repeals or potentially repeals, but also enacts a new ordinance that would opt the city out via the ballot provision. The, the reluctance I have is that, is that the will of the council was to keep it as simple as possible and not, not to overly complicate the issue or would complicate the ballot question. So in, in an effort to try and keep it as simple as possible, that's, that's all and why I provided you with that. And again, it's.
And that's the question.
It's, yeah, that's one option. Yeah, I think it, you're okay. Yeah, very simple, straightforward, uh, one sentence that would be on the ballot that, uh,
Shelby City. Village Charter be amended to prohibit all cannabis establishments within the boundaries of the city.
That language, the all in that language, does that bring in any conflict with the other Congress member? Yeah, because you can't.
Right. I mean, so those are already permitted and those wouldn't be subject to, and I'll have to double check that, but those, because they're not open to the general public. It's not a retail establishment. It, it may need some further specification that any, any retail cannabis business or.
So we could just.
Yeah, well, not, not just retail, but it would be anything under Michigan recreational, whatever the rest of the app and we had some of the, but so there's, there's medical marijuana, there's caregivers. And then there's recreational. So this, this amendment would be aimed specifically at the medical and recreational cannabis industry. The caregiver is a different, it's a patient provider relationship that the city does not have the ability to preclude. But they can regulate and we have already done that. We've established an overlay district, it's an office district, a portion of the office district that has been designated as the provisioning centers for, for caregivers. And then again, that was done.
That was done last.
About a year ago.
It was last February.
And, and that was again, primarily because individuals were utilizing that as a loophole, as a way to get around the licensing requirements to the state to be a recreational or a medical facility. They would enlist a number of patients, but there was no, at the state level, there's no registry or accountability. So you could have four different, you could be a caregiver for four different groups of people. And instead of only having five patients and yourself, you could have 20 patients. So now you're, you're growing and producing a significant amount of marijuana. And, and a lot of that was taking place. We have, we did have situations and instances where that was being done in the residential district. There were a couple of homes that these facilities were operational at. And unfortunately, until we enacted that ordinance, we didn't have a, a mechanism to preclude them from the residential neighborhood. So, so that is and has been in effect and I think the chief can weigh in. But I think we've gotten rid of all of those that we're aware of.
I believe so. I don't receive any complaints. It is winter time and people are inside. We get more of those complaints in the summertime. But as of right now, it's been pretty quiet.
And is there something to wait till the general election? And is there something to wait till the general election? Determine if we decide to move forward or do you put it up as a special election? You're pretty confident not scoring and not being able to score as many.
Yeah, I'm absolutely confident. I mean, unless the city adopts a resolution opening up the application period. There is no way that cannabis business could submit an application or have an application evaluated by the city. So the city. The fact that the city has opted in and has identified the types and the number of facilities that they will allow and the procedure by which they will allow them. It prevents the scenario that I described earlier where a. Entity could obtain a conditional license and then without any oversight or input from the community. Open up a facility in that community. So the um. And and that was, you know, that's kind of been what I've explained throughout this process. I think that that has been the protection. Initially, why um. Why we we why, you know, as a city, we we kind of have an opinion that, well, I'd say as a consultant and I can. Want to speak for the chief, but I know we had. Previously held some town hall meetings and and we were opposed to opting in. We were opposed to allowing or carving out this. This the mechanism for this industry to come into the city, but the more we learned about it and and we were educated by a lot of the outside consultants and all the. Um members of the industry. That the way we did it actually provided the city with more protection and more control than just not doing anything. So that's. That is, right now, there is zero percent chance that a of. Organization could legally open up a recreation or or a medical facility in the city. Well, no, they, I mean, it would, based on what what I reviewed that you sent over, it appears that they applied for. A conditional license for that location. Uh should should the city open up, they would, one of the requirements in our our ordinance was that they be prequalified from the state before they even apply to the city. So. That organization had the intent or perhaps still has the intent of of operating a recreational dispensary. At that location. Now, I believe that location is not in our permitted zone anyways. That's a whole other issue that they would have to address, but. But yeah, from their perspective, they have gotten all the requisite approvals needed from the state of Michigan. And they they are simply waiting on the city to open up that application period and submit their application. So.
And you are correct that that particular property is. In the buffer zone, so it is not in eligible location for a cannabis facility at any time. I'm not surprised.
And and there may be others too. I didn't look. I mean, there there could be other. Condition and I and I would suspect that there are probably several other conditionally approved facilities for the city. At various locations within the city. That that would not surprise me at all. It it, you know, and just to kind of add, these these applicants that are go through this conditional approval, it's it's a. And this came up during um. The scoring matrix discussion. It's a significant process that they go through. A lot of information that's provided to this day, a lot of. Background information. So I I. I really believe that any any organization or entity that goes through the process to get the state approval is not going to be running some. Uh you know, sub rosa operation out of the back door and by, you know, potentially jeopardizing their ability to get a license from the state. So. That's just speculation on my part, but it would be really, really. Silly for for an organization to do that um and risk jeopardizing that that license.
Any um further questions or discussions? Thank you, Scott. Um next, we have. A public comment comes before mayor council. So I'm I'm gonna actually flip it because um. It should be public comments first. So if anybody wants to respond to it during their um council comments, they can. So I'm gonna open it up for public comments. Speakers are limited to three minutes. And per the Robert rules of order, there will be no dialogue or debate with the members of the public. However, the council members can respond during their council comments. Was there anybody that? Uh wants to speak? I don't think anyone's in the other room either, right?
So the one individual that was in there actually just signed on. Um Zoom, so I don't believe there's anyone. Uh anyone on Zoom, please raise your hand, you know.
Raise my hand. Can you hear me? Oh, okay. Um quickly, um thank you guys for opening up to public comment. Um I just want to commend um one of the council persons for helping me over the weekend. I was very disappointed. I live close to the U and my son is a freshman there. And over the weekend, he said that he needed to shovel. And I'm thinking, okay, he's gonna shovel our driveway. And he said, no, I have to shovel the pathway to school. You know, nobody shovels over there. And I'm thinking like, okay, wait, you walk in the, you know, through the. If you know the way right through La Crosse to the U, um it just piles of snow. He said, no, I need to shovel so it's ready for school. And I end up emailing the superintendent and a councilman, Bruce Cantor. I sorry if I um. Mispronounce your last name. And um he was very helpful. The the city portion was able to get cleared. And the um school portion was cleared as well Sunday night. So I do want to publicly publicly commend him. For um helping me in such a quick time and making sure that my son has a clear path to school. And I will say, I do hope that we don't have to scramble like this in the future. Because we know there's more snow to come. So if we can please just be cognizant of that area um and maybe just. Make sure that somebody is um visiting to that, visiting that area, that path, especially after a snowstorm. That will be great. Thank you.
Thank you for letting us know. Is there anyone, was there anyone in another room? Was there anyone else that wanted to speak that's on Zoom? Doesn't look like it. So we'll move on to mayor and uh council comments. I'm assuming that regarding what Ms. Powell was talking about, it's gonna come up in our meeting with the Southfield uh school board. From or South. I thought it was a whole bunch of things with the. Oh, okay. So I didn't see all of it. Okay, well, then. Okay, um and I don't think that I have anything either. So any council person, go ahead.
Yeah, I actually have a lot of things. Uh I had a bunch of things for the last two meetings, but they ran so long that I uh kind of deferred them. Um so the first thing, I want to go back to the cell tower. Pam had had forwarded uh. Uh a gentleman to me from Tower Point to who had contacted her and and Pam had initially thought that that was the representative for. From American Tower and got in the conversation and realized it wasn't American Tower and that he was trying. Uh talk us about something else. So so I talked to him this morning. Um still pretty confused about exactly, exactly what kind of service he's offering. He talked very, very quickly. But it sounds like the the gist of it is, is instead of like, they provide an option instead of leasing to. Or leasing or selling to American Tower, they become, this his organization becomes the leaseholder. They provide us with a lump sum, which he referred to as being close to what we would be getting to from American Tower. And then they take the responsibility for um leasing the tower. And anybody they lease to, we split fifty fifty the revenue. Uh so if they get, you know. T-Mobile and Dish, you know, we would get half of each of those, each of those um. We lease payment. So it 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 sounds like having your cake and eat it too. I'm I'm a little skeptical, but I did ask him. To to send some uh information to me and uh thought that it might be good to have him rather than. I thought I'd love to have five people listening to what he has to say instead of just one. So if if. If council was agreeable, I could try to have him come to our next study session and. And speak to us and let him know what 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 his company offers. Apparently, they have seven thousand sites that they they do this with.
If you can also find out in our contract, if they, if American Tower adds additional providers, do we get a split of that also?
Yeah, that. Yeah, that's the revenue sharing component that um.
Right.
She she referenced earlier that. And and we used to have more carriers. I think we also had Verizon. Um that was something that was negotiated under the original lease by Nat Quinn. Yeah, next. So we I think we had four on at one point in time. Um and that that uh very similar to what Bruce has given us here, that that type of a revenue sharing. Is not uncommon in these agreements, so.
But I'm just saying, for future, it's it's included, we'll get it if they add, you know, whoever they add.
Yeah, under the current lease, if they were to renew that on those terms, it would be, we would continue to see that revenue sharing if there were additional co-locators.
Okay.
It wouldn't, it um. We wouldn't see that if we did the the lease buyout option, because then they would be free to put.
Alright, the next thing I just want to talk a little bit about is snow removal. And I'm gonna, at least the first topic, I'm gonna defer a little bit to Scott on because it was one of these things. Uh Alicia just just spoke on public comment. It was one of these things where. You you take a little issue and you start to look at it and all these other things start to come to light. And basically what that is is. There's the sidewalk that runs from La Crosse to the school gate, as well as the sidewalk that goes in perpendicular that runs along the the city gate. It sounds like because that's along an undeveloped street, Red River. Uh that it's actually the uh uh homeowners there that are responsible for clearing those streets. And then as we further. The it it appears that along those homes, along that that fence line, there are. Structures and landscape and and so forth that are actually in the right of way, which would require. An encroachment license, which is something that we've forced on other residents who were in a similar situation. So then it becomes an issue of. You know, now do we have to bring an encroachment license? And I'll let you more eloquently uh. Describe it, but then and I want to come back and talk a little bit more about the snow snow problem. But.
Yeah, so I think um you could see, I mean, you could look, we'll show and tell here.
So we come up here, you can see Red River here is actually it it happens right here. But it was planted and never developed all the way up to La Crosse. So that's that's a street which. Section sixty-two, one twenty-five of the of the code of ordinances. Allocates the responsibility for snow and ice removal to property owners or occupiers adjacent to. That street. It's in essence, it's a sidewalk. So in. In reality, and I had asked, who's been doing this for all these years? Who's been shoveling that pathway? In reality, it should be the those adjacent parcels that are responsible for for clearing that sidewalk. Now, obviously, if the city has somebody that's doing sidewalk removal, we could ask them to to include that. Um because it is, it is somewhat of a unique situation, given that. Uh it doesn't, it doesn't, there's no actual street there, so it doesn't really seem like it would be a sidewalk. But. But I think under a strict interpretation of the ordinance, that would be the resident's responsibility to to remove that snow and ice. And then, yes, as as Bruce indicated, when I started looking at this. And you see all of these uh structures that are built into the city's property. Technically, again, that would require an encroachment license and. There are, there, I'm sure these aren't the only ones in the city that are in this situation. Um as we've kind of come across them or uncovered them, we have required the residents to to get those encroachment licenses. Most recently, we did the one over here off Lakehead Boulevard where. The street dead ended and the the resident had been utilizing it uh as really as their driveway, but they were required to get that uh approach license. So. Another issue, and and again, I think it's something that uh. Probably should be done. I I anticipate you'll probably get a little. The residents might be a little upset because you're asking them, well, now you got to shovel the sidewalk too. Uh you have to get a a license to be able to keep your. Your shed or your gazebo or whatever. And I, again, these are, these are things that, when I looked at the, these aren't just like a trampoline or something. These look like buildings. So I don't know how they were ever built there. Um unless there was some sort of vacation or abandonment of that, which I didn't see uh that roadway. That that would be, again, that would be the appropriate. Um can we, can we have Rami send a a letter to these people? I'm sure they don't even know that they're responsible for the sidewalk.
Yeah, I mean, I think what I would recommend, again, sending a letter, I think Rami should probably try to knock on their doors and have a conversation with them or. Yeah, a very directed conversation with them, specifically just letting them know that what. Uh what's going on. And and maybe, again, some of these may have at some point gotten permission or gotten an even. We didn't formalize that even process until about three or four years ago. So. It is possible that there, they may have some information. So before we send letters out accusing them of being in violation, I would.
I would.
Well, I know, but sometimes the letters that come out have a tendency to be accusatory in nature. So that's why I said a very specific directive to. To Rami to go out and um. You know, just kind of find out what the status is with those individual properties.
Have the city administration follow up with their encroachment.
Yeah, if there if there's a situation where they haven't or they haven't gotten approval for it, then um. And again, it's more just that it's more just an instance of being. Fair and equitable to those other residents that we have required to go through that process. I know it's an inconvenience, but it is unfortunate.
Alright, so then that that leads me into the snow removal on Eleven Mile, which I know council has talked about a lot over the last four or five years. Um I think when we last talked about it, it was, you know, determined that that was actually the road commission's. Yeah, the road commission's responsibility.
Delegated to Oakland County. Oakland County said, nope.
Yeah, and so um so then we, I know we had said it at some point, then we were gonna get our DDA cleanup crew to just take care of it. And then when we went to hire a DDA cleanup crew, we couldn't get anybody to. Apply for the job. So so we still have the problem. I I I've received a lot of complaints about Eleven Mile Road, uh people walking on it and the snow is. It it is not cleared, so I wanted to bring that up is is, you know, to discuss and see if we can come up with some type of potential solution and then. Wanted to leave that into also, you know, we we have a full-time code enforcer and uh otherwise it's out right now. But um I just want to make sure that, you know, a couple of days after. After it snows, that that he's out there making the rounds to make sure, you know, people are clearing their locks because it's the, you know, I think. Probably about twenty percent of the the walkways sidewalks are not are not cleared. As a regular walker, I see it all the time and it's always the same. It's always the same houses.
Well, in terms of eleven mile, uh the DDA actually does, um we took over the Excel. Contract for um. For all, really all maintenance for eleven miles. So it includes the the mowing and. Fertilizing during, you know, the spring summer. And it is supposed to be also the plowing and salting of those sidewalks. So um. I I will be having a conversation with them as to why they didn't do that um.
Follow up and let us know on our next meeting or send us an email. Yes, thank you.
And then a lot of these last little things, I I I realize you guys are, you know, swamped. And I I just want to, some of these that have been on the on the list to follow up for a long time, I just want to. Bring them up. So if you guys do have time, I'm looking at them. I know they're not all gonna get addressed right away. And some of them, we've been talking a lot for a while and this is a no. No list of important, uh order of no importance, but um. Uh still want to make sure that we we get some type of additional detail on the CCLX fix reporting eventually in in the packet. We also talked about about six months ago, and then I think I brought it up about four months ago again. You know, part of the uh road and road proposal was to also, you know, use code enforcement for. Obvious ditch issues. And we were gonna talk about, I think it might have been with the last council, we talked about having Rami. You know, kind of trying to be able to look at the other nineteen miles that aren't getting paved and, you know, where where appropriate. Make it, make it, make those ditches get fixed, you know, roots, things like that, that are that are blocking uh flow of water. You'll, uh, make it, make it, make those ditches get fixed, you know, roots, things like that, that are, that are blocking, uh, flow of water. We had talked about, I know this was with, with Cheryl and never heard anything back, um, but we'd also talked about, um, asking M.DOT, road commission, whoever, Scott, correct me, um, to raise, if they, see if they could raise the curb over on Eleven Mile on the entrance into, uh, six ninety-six going westbound to prohibit the cut-through traffic coming out on, on Meadow Brook, because what people do is they go through there and then they just, it's like a little ramp and they cut onto the, under the downward ramp when it's supposed to be yeah, so when, when, if it was a proper curb, then that would eliminate all the cut-through traffic, there's a pretty simple solution, so we brought that up about I don't know, six months ago or so, and never went back, I know Cheryl was gonna check with either M.DOT or
I would think that that's, I'm, I'm not concerned since it's, you know, that I'm concerned, so it's kind of where he's, right, is that what I'm, am I imagining?
If you're going south on Southfield, you turn right on eleven, you're gonna go down onto the highway, that buffer area to your right is, is a smooth ramp that people can, it's just an inch or two, and people can eas- easily just pop right over it, Scott, you probably see it all the time. So, it was resident suggested, asked me to suggest, uh, putting a regular curb on it. Uh, I know we, we talked about, and I'm sure you guys haven't had a chance to look into it yet, but some looking into, so to get dropped the customer service software, and I know Cheryl was also looking into some text blasting, um, as well, so if we can keep that on your list when you have time. I do want to give a, a shout out to the, the, the staff and our, and our city planners, um, I don't know if it's been, how well it's been communicated, but we have received, uh, three rather large grants recently. So, one of them was, uh, for about two hundred thousand dollars, more than two hundred thousand dollars for storm sewer televising, I think that one was publicized, but we also have, uh, uh, we got a two hundred and forty-two thousand dollar grant for, uh, lead excavation work, and then, uh, two hundred and twelve thousand dollar grant we just got recently that'll help us to pray the costs of, of a part of the Eleven Mile Road fix that we need to do. That's all, all great news. Um, and then transitioning that into infrastructure, a couple of things, um, I just wanted to verify, um, you know, we had a water main break last December that calls, um, was a subcontract that the consumers broke, and I want to make sure that we're making sure that they pay for that water main break, not us. And then along the same lines, I know several months ago, we asked for verification that the, for last summer's work that the, uh, DDA approach work, the culverts that were done, uh, via code enforcement the DPW parking lot, and all that was reimbursed back into the millage fund because that shouldn't be taken out of the millage fund, so I know you were looking into that, I just want to make sure, just get a confirmation that that's been done. And that's enough for now.
Uh, anyone else have any council comments? Questions? Oh, hearing none, then, um.
We have a question. We lost an employee today, any update on that?
Oh, she was, she was let go, it's that.
Or showing another staff member.
Um, and I did send the, um, I don't know if you saw, I did send the request for, uh, if they did temporary hires to the, um, staffing company that's over in Southfield. Any other questions, concerns? Hearing none, I'll take, uh, I guess we can be adjourned, because I don't have to do a motion, right? Okay, well, adjournment.